All right, we're going to get started here.
I know, I'm trying to rustle these two guys around.
All right, we have reconvened from closed session. I would like to make the following announcement. That by a five to zero vote, the City Council authorized and directed the city's, city attorney's office to defend the case of Nia Lee versus Elk, City of Elk Grove, as identified by the case number on the City Council meeting agenda. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn the special meeting at 6:02 PM. And that brings us to our regular meeting. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, September 13, 2023. It is 6:02 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is being closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, September 15th at 1:00 PM, and Sunday, September 17th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.elkgrovescity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card there. The blue cards that can be found at the back of the room or up here with Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard, and provide them to the Assistant City Clerk prior to a consideration of the agenda item. And Mayor, with that, I will transition us to our first order of business, which is the call to order and roll call. For the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Present.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spies.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite our Police Chief to lead us today.
Hand over hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, may I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is our closed session.
And there are no closed session items on the regular agenda as well. For Section 4, our presentations and announcements, there are no presentation items on the regular agenda. That will advance us to Section 5, General Public Comment.
All right, very good. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. And we have several folks signed up to speak. We will start with Alan Vito Jr., followed by Alan Vito III.
This is Mayor, City Council, and all others.
Don't want to leave no one out. Good evening. I am in front of you all tonight over homelessness in America, especially Main Street, Old Town Elk Grove. It's sad. Homelessness is sad. But it's not deserving to become an occupation for our kids, family, or friends, or a foundation that we give money to for the good work they do, like Cancer Foundation, Shain Jude's, or the Shriners Hospital. They do good. Homelessness destroys communities, and the person and families around it are most affected by it. I can't say what needs to be said in three minutes. I will play this like a chess game and try to end up with a checkmate, meaning that my family continues to do what they do, work hard, and be dedicated to this community. I believe in myself and my family, we will be at work during and after all this. It's sad to think four or five blocks in Elk Grove was the beginning of Elk Grove, California in the 1850s. And that same four or five blocks has a high probability of becoming the deterioration of a once beautiful place and community to raise a family and do business, and a community that saved my life. I thank you for your time. I was once told that if you have nothing nice to say, you should probably not say nothing at all. And so from now on, I won't say anything at all. And I thank you guys for your time. And in my heart, believe me, is with all homeless drug addiction, I mean, that was me. And I didn't, I didn't change my life by getting a bunch of handouts. I changed my life by dedicating myself to the same thing that each, every one of you do. Care about your family, your community, my son. I mean, this is crazy, dude, where we're going. But anyways, thank you, guys. I just, I, some people came by my barn and told me about this. I didn't know. Nobody notified me that was going on. The community came by my barn, left me stuff to come here. I got them if you want to see them. And so that's why I'm here. Good to see all of you. I'm sorry that this is where I see you guys at. You ever want to come and have a drink, let me know. I'll buy y'all one. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Next up is Alan Vito III, followed by Sam Richardson.
Hello, Mayor Bobby Singh, Councilmembers. I was actually going to speak, just in case my father wasn't planning on speaking, but he kind of said it for us. I just, I wanted to come out to show the support and love that we have for the community of Old Town, or Historic Downtown, I believe is now what we're trying to call it. And we've been doing that as well. We've been really trying to work hard to keep the image of Old Town and Historic Downtown Elk Grove in a good light. It's gotten hard. I believe that you guys, I truly want to believe that you guys are fighting the fight with the Elk Grove Apartments, you know, to try to keep that place out of our community somewhere that's better fitted for it. But it's, we're fighting a fight down in Bob's Club every day, too. You know, with violent, more and more violent individuals coming, you know, by the bar, homeless individuals. And, you know, we've been, had our young female bartenders threatened on several occasions and whatnot. Thankfully, the police force has been, you know, help there whenever we need them. But it's still, I just hope that, you know, it's not a sign of things to come. So that's why we're all here, kind of just to show our concern and also our support for you guys in the fight to come. And hopefully, you guys keep on fighting for us, and we can do something. But it just feels like the state's got their boots on our throats and don't really see a light at the end of the tunnel. So hopefully, you guys can breathe some hope back into us. So that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Penelope Leonard, followed by Samantha Govan.
Hello. I own Radcliffe Academy, the Little Red.
Hi, can you please come up here, yeah, so we can hear you properly?
Thank you for being here. I own Radcliffe Academy, the Little Red Schoolhouse on the corner of Waterman and Elk Grove Boulevard. I've owned it for 30 years, the land and the buildings. And it's almost an acre. And at night, when I'm changing the seasonal bulletin boards in my school till 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning on three buildings, it's quite time-consuming. I have seen and witnessed a homeless person coming to my gate to try to get in. And we also have been broken into in the previous years. And I waved him on with my phone to my, and said, "I'm calling the police." So they ran off. Within a half an hour, they were breaking into the window of the new site that you're going to be putting into a homeless shelter for the winter months. Because at that time, there was a drugster there, I think it was Rite Aid. And I called the police, and they came quickly and caught the guy on one occasion. Those are windows back there by the parking lot there. But it's hidden because of all those trees, beautiful trees there in the parking lot. But as an ex-police corps worker for 10 years, I feel sorry for homeless. But it should be down on Grant Line Road or other lots that are away from those buildings. We have the Jack Hill Park right behind Bel Air. And a lot of middle school and high school kids walk past Radcliffe to get home to those huge houses back there. And they're all back there playing soccer and basketball. And another thing, you really don't know in the homeless shelter, who is a licensed, who's a pedophile. It's missed on the computers by the parole officers. They don't know where they're living. And we're just not safe at night with the homeless being in Old Town. And I'd like you to try to keep Old Town like a beautiful area rather than becoming raggedy with paper and bottles all over the ground, going over to Bel Air or over to Starbucks or... It will become that way, even for the winter months. And if you could find another location, that would be better than our neighborhood. And just grandfather clause Radcliffe in there, and please don't do that to our school. It's just not safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Samantha Govan. And the last speaker is Estella Drake, unless we get more slips.
Greetings, esteemed members of the City Council. My name is Samantha Govan, and I am a 25-year-old homeowner residing in Old Elk Grove. I'm not only a wife, but also a mother of a one-year-old child. In January, my family invested half a million dollars into our home, primarily because Old Elk Grove is promoted as an ideal community for young families that is undergoing beautification. We are particularly thrilled to learn of the plans of a library behind our house, anticipating that it would attract more families to our community. However, in recent developments, I have raised, it has raised some concerns amongst myself, fellow neighbors, and local business owners. As it has come to my attention, there are discussions about converting a library into a building that is a temporary homeless shelter and possibly constructing a low-income apartment complex in the field across from my residence. I would like to express our collective concerns in this regard. Let me be clear that I am not at all suggesting that homelessness is not a critical need for our city, or homelessness care is not a critical need for our city. I have personally dedicated many years of my life volunteering with homeless individuals. Nevertheless, I firmly believe the proposed location is not suitable for such living spaces. Regarding temporary shelter, it appears counterproductive to relocate homeless individuals into a community with numerous bars along the main road. Many homeless individuals struggle with addiction, and placing them in such proximity to their triggers raises many concerns about their well-being. Moreover, it deeply saddens me to share that I have personally lost friends to the devastating fentanyl issue, which further underscores the urgency of addressing the root causes of addiction in a more appropriate setting. Furthermore, I have been informed that individuals at the shelter will be using the parking lot for showers. This parking lot is adjacent to several homes where children reside. I cannot feel at ease in my own backyard, knowing that grown men are showering right behind the fence that my child plays. As a young mother, I often walk to save money while grocery shopping. However, I would not feel safe walking during dark hours if individuals with active addictions are wandering in the vicinity, particularly during the early evening, winter months, when darkness falls as early as 5:00 PM. Another significant concern relates to our ongoing efforts to beautify Old Elk Grove, which we have discussed in previous meetings. We organize monthly community events that attract people of all ages to our small community. The proposed development would undoubtedly impact local businesses negatively. Even if only the temporary shelter is established, the local flower shop would be forced to share space with the shelter, which could potentially reduce her foot traffic. In addition, the familiarity of the area may lead to homeless individuals to remain in the vicinity, as has been the case with two homeless individuals living in the field behind Bel Air. This creek area backs up to our children's parks, which raises safety and communication, or which raises safety and community wellbeings and concerns. It is essential to recognize that there are numerous resources to assist homelessness and individuals. Local churches can connect them to the appropriate support networks, and several locations offer access to public computers to aid the search and assistance. Additionally, various organizations such as Chicks in Crisis, True Life Outreach, Share Homes, and Ain't God Good are actively working to find housing solutions for those in need.
Thank you. Next up is Estella Drake.
Hello, everybody, and thank you for all you do for our voiceless community animals in Elk Grove. I'm here today. I shared with you about a month ago an email with a suggestion of a wonderful employee that you guys could hire. She retired from the City of Elk Grove. She was the awesome volunteer coordinator. And during, what I handed you is an award that she received in 2018, because volunteers make the world a better place. With over 2,000 volunteers who provide us with over 100,000 hours of service last year, which is equal to having 49.5 additional employees and valued at $2.5 million. That's what this gal was bringing to the table. We need her. I called her, and I said, "I know you're retired. It's been two years. Aren't you bored yet?" So, I mean, you guys can look at hiring her, so that volunteers, we can help, and it'll help our budget, too, so we don't have to hire more employees. It'll help the shelter staff. It'll help the outreach for all of your events, because we need to have tables out there. We need to have tables to let all of our constituents, your constituents, know that there is an animal shelter. How many people, we're a secret out there. They know we have one, or they don't. They don't even know where it's at. We need people to get the word out, because that's what's going to turn things around in the City of Elk Grove. And we need this superstar. Please, think about reaching out to her. I did call her, she's on vacation, and I said, "Hey, you know, anybody reach out to you?" No, crickets, once again. So please, you guys, think about hiring somebody. She could either be full-time, part-time, or as a consultant to get the ball rolling so we can get this mess cleared up. Thank you so much, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I am not showing the other speakers yet on my computer, but I know we have a number.
They're speaking under consent.
Under consent, I see. Okay, we will hold off on that then. At this point, I don't have any other public comments, so I will go ahead and close the public comment. Manager, for the City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council, Jason Berman, the City Manager. Several items to report on this evening. First, some good news. The City, in collaboration with SACRT, has been awarded a $470,000 grant from Caltrans to update the plan for the Blue Line Light Rail Extension through Elk Grove. This provides an opportunity to fine-tune the conceptual design along the corridors. We look at additional ways for people to get around the city. Planning efforts will involve extensive community engagement in the coming year. Applications for the fall installation of banners that are part of the City's Military Street Banner Program will be accepted through this Friday, September 15th. These banners are proudly displayed on streetlights located along Elk Grove Boulevard and Civic Center Drive between Big Horn and Laguna Springs. Elk Grove residents who retired or who were honorably discharged from the United States Armed Forces are eligible for recognition. Applications and information on how to sponsor a street banner honoring an Elk Grove veteran are available on the City's website. Animal Services will be hosting appointments for a drive-through vaccine clinic at the animal shelter this Saturday from 8:00 to 11:00 AM. Free vaccines and microchips will be provided to approximately 150 Elk Grove pets. Appointment details can be found on our website. An additional reminder, also, this Saturday, the City will host the Home Energy Savings Expo and Ride and Drive Event in partnership with SMUD at District 56 from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Visitors will have a chance to learn how to reduce their carbon footprint, lower their energy bills, and test drive and ride electric vehicles and bikes. Elk Grove Police Department will be hosting a free fraud prevention seminar in the council chambers next Wednesday, September 20th, from 10:30 to 12:00. The seminar is intended to educate and protect our senior community, in particular, from scams. Details are available on the police department's website and social media pages. Elk Grove Arts Commission will host their next production, Akopa Club Afternoon, next Sunday, September 24th, from 3:00 to 5:30 at District 56. The Cabaret-esque event will feature musical performances by local favorites. Seeing is limited, and general admission is $10 a person. Finally, the City and Explorel Grove are collaborating to introduce a special Fridays in the Grove Comedy Night at Old Town Plaza on Friday, October 20th. Join us on Main Street for a Night of Laughs, courtesy of Sacramento Laughs Unlimited. VIP tickets have already sold out. But general admission tickets can still be purchased online for $10 a person. More information is on our website. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you for that great report. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to... Oh, you do have one? Okay. Councilmember Brewer.
So I know Saturday, Elk Grove Police is holding their BBQ in the Beat at Durakamoto Park. Is that from 11:00 to 2:00?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's like, all these events have been very popular. People have been coming out and attending at each of the sites. Definitely encourage people to come out to Durakamoto Park on the east side. Definitely, because it gives you a chance to meet our police officers and our fire department, get a chance to, for the kids to be on the vehicles, but also gives you a chance to talk to any of them and any of us on any issues you may have. I know I've seen Ms. Drake at a previous one, where we had a really good conversation about issues in the area. So I definitely encourage people to show up and be a part of that, because these are really positive events. It gets a chance for you to meet each of the council members and the police and fire, and really talk about issues of the day.
Thank you, Councilmember. That's a great reminder. Chief, is this the last one of the season?
Yeah.
Yes, it's our last one. Yeah. So if you haven't had an opportunity to check it out, please come out. It's a great opportunity to connect.
Well, the chief cooks himself. So, good stuff. All right. No other questions. I will move on to our consent calendar items. I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. And we have three people signed up for Item 7.9. We will start with James McCarthy, followed by Kat Mendoza.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding the grant for the Elk Grove Animal Shelter from California for All Animals. As you are plainly aware, we have been raising the topic of increasing spay-neuter slots at the city shelter for the last year, and look forward to the announcement of how many extra slots the City will be providing with this grant. Expansion of the spay-neuter program at the shelter will go a long way to helping control the rising feral population in Elk Grove. It is too bad the grant was not for more money, but then there's always next year. The overabundance of adoptable cats and kittens at the shelter more than brings to light the need for a spay-neuter program expansion. We are pleased to see that with the purchase of additional live and drop traps, more citizens can be involved in helping to control the city's feral overpopulation problem. A suggestion to ensure a successful trapping program with the new equipment purchased by the grant is to provide contact information to experienced trappers, to offer guidance on how to set up traps and get the feral cats into the proper live traps before they are brought to the shelter, as well as things that should be done to help reduce the stress of the trapped cats. The trappers you have seen here at previous council meetings have many years of experience. They are willing to provide help to the public. These are skills many learned after their own early failures trapping. We are pleased that the Council is increasing the shelter budget to reflect the additional funds from the grant. Being able to track these expenditures as part of the annual budget process will help citizens of the community better understand the efforts of our fine shelter staff, at least with respect to the services they provide to care for unhomed cats and kittens and returning lost pets to their owners. Our next focus will be to improve the shelter's foster care program. My wife and I are currently doing our part as we foster five kittens over and above our typical feline household family. This is the fourth or fifth cycle of kittens we are helping to get socialized for adoption. We have even made trips out of state to help rehome some kittens with friends. We have heard the shelter's plans to attend more community events, and many of us would be willing to provide volunteer assistance to the shelter staff if they provide us with dates and times, even as it's just to hand out brochures at the events. Again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Kat Mendoza, followed by Julie Verga.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathy. I just want to say that I have a solution that you are going to like. But first, I want to talk about some survey results from a survey that we put out on Monday. The survey was just to ask community cat feeders how much, on average, they spend per month. So here are some of the results. Somebody feeds 80 cats and spends $1,069 per month. Somebody feeds, I'm sorry, somebody spends $1,300 per month. Somebody spends $900 per month and feeds 110 cats. Somebody spends $300 to $400 feeding 14 colonies. I could tell you from experience that although the numbers vary, you should really take into consideration how many colonies, because I feed at five different colonies, and just the driving in-between takes a while. And that person feeds 149 cats. So those are some of the numbers. We had around 60 respondents, just because we put it out so late. Some of the solutions that we had thought of is putting out donation bins, just because we need more donations for some of the people that responded to our survey. There, a lot of people don't have the resources, and we would like the City to help more with that. But we did go out and ask grocery stores and other chain stores to set up donation bins, and some of them did respond and say that they do approve us doing that. We just want to know, would the police station also be willing to set up a donation bin? Or maybe even the city chambers or Rod Brewer, if you have any connections, to set one up at the library? We would appreciate that. And, yeah, we just want to help out. We have another idea, too, is just to make a calendar with cats and kittens, adoptable cats and kittens, and maybe the donations can, the money that people will spend from that can go towards funding community cats and supplies and things like that. And my sister actually volunteered to be the photographer. She does a lot of professional photos for our friends and family. Okay. I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Julie Verga.
Good evening. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of Barbara Bowen Doty, who runs Lap Cats and has been in the Elk Grove area for many, many years, and has an adoption center at the PetSmart here. And she couldn't be here tonight because she is out of state, but she was very concerned about this issue regarding spay-neuter. And she was very happy about the grant, but she did have a few comments, and I'm speaking on her behalf. Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, Lap Cats has rescued over 7,000 cats and kittens from the Sacramento and Elk Grove area for over 20 years. We operate an adoption center at the Elk Grove PetSmart and have been a resource for the citizens of Elk Grove since 2005. I have been in the animal rescue world for 40 years, and I can honestly say that while we were making great strides in years past, we are slipping quickly into a dark hole and drowning. I never thought I would see the day that shelters would turn away animals like a third-world country. Lap Cats is inundated every single day with multiple requests from citizens in every jurisdiction, including Elk Grove, Front Street, and Bradshaw. They need help, they need answers, and for the first time in my 40 years of helping animals, I am at a loss as to what to tell them. Shelters are turning away in record numbers animals, such as just recently, a pregnant cat with a litter of helpless kittens. What logical, humane person would give that kind of advice? What do you think happens to those animals? Since when is it the responsibility of the public to take on the mess left behind when a community does not care and a municipal shelter, publicly funded, turns away animals in violation of California law, both Hayden and rabies? The crisis of overpopulation will not go away unless we actively look for solutions and work together regionally to find them. We respectfully ask that in addition to the court grant monies, that the Mayor and Council provide monetary support to increase a spay-neuter contract with vet teams for this shelter. We respectfully ask Director Humley to request additional court grant monies for community cat support and and spay neuter resources immediately. For background, UCD Court received fifty million dollars in our two thousand twenty-one state budget to help manage monies designated to make California a no-kill state. Implementing untested, unproven trends in sheltering unfortunately has exploded under their direction. On behalf of Lapcats, I respectfully ask the mayor and council to provide monetary support to, to increase spay neuter contract vet teams for this shelter immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Right at three minutes. And that is our final speaker for consent calendar. So I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move consent. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And on to item eight point one, public hearings.
An item eight point one is three public hearings. Consider the seventieth annexation to CFD two thousand three dash two for police services, the ninety-third annexation to CFD two thousand six dash one for maintenance services, and the twenty-ninth annexation to street maintenance, district number one, zone five Z. That staff will tell us which project that relates to.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Again, it's, uh, my name is VJ Masuria, financial analyst for the city of Elk Grove. I'm here this evening with a presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. The city maintains eight special tax districts, which provide funding for infrastructure and services such as police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting, and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a new development project's approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary accordingly to the geographic location and building use. Special taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. On July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, the city council adopted resolutions of the tenth to annex the project's parcel as shown on the screen, Partis Apartments Project, into special tax districts and to establish tonight's public hearing. The project is being proposed for annexation into the following various special tax districts. CFD two thousand three dash two, Police Services, CFD two thousand six dash one, Maintenance Services, and Street Maintenance District One, Zone Five, Street Maintenance. This is the seventieth, seventieth annexation into two thousand, into CFD two thousand three dash two, Police Services, and nine, the ninety-third annexation into CFD two thousand six dash one, and then twenty-ninth annexation into Street, Street Maintenance, District One, Zone Five. All these assessments will be levied in perpetuity. What is the project? The project is Partis Apartments, which consists of two hundred and thirty-six, two hundred and thirty-six multifamily residential units located southeast of Poppy Ridge Road and Big Horn Boulevard. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. I am available for questions.
All right, thank you for that. I will declare that the public hearing for CFD two zero zero three dash two, Annex seventy, is now open, and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anybody sign up. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD two zero zero three dash two, Annex seventy, is closed. And look for motion A one.
Motion A one. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, may I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Indeed, of two hundred and thirty-six possible votes, two hundred and thirty-six affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Thank you. Looking for motion A two, please.
Motion A two. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion A three, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax in the seven, seventieth annexation to Community Facilities District Number two thousand three dash two, Police Services, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section three point one eight point zero one zero.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our second public hearing, CFD two zero zero six dash one, Annex ninety-three. I will declare the public hearing now open and open up the public comment opportunity. No one has signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one, Annex ninety-three, is now closed. And look for motion B one.
Motion B one. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And, uh, may I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Of two hundred and thirty-six possible votes, two hundred and thirty-six affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Madam Mayor, motion B two. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, motion B three, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only of an ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax in territory annexed to Community Facilities District Number two zero zero six dash one, Maintenance Services, Annexation Number ninety-three, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section three point one nine point zero one zero.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Onto our third public hearing. I will declare the public hearing for SMD five dash Z Annex twenty-nine open, and open up the public comment opportunity. Uh, no one signed up. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SMD five dash Z, Annex twenty-nine is now closed, and request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
And we're keeping consistent. There is no majority protest. Of two hundred and six, thirty-six possible votes weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for the property, two hundred and thirty-six affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. A resolution determining levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
They're chomping at the bits here for motion C.
I didn't see. To adopt the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. And moving on to our next item, our regular agenda action items. Item nine point one.
And that's to receive information on the broadband digital access report and provide direction on next steps.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Carrie Whitlock, Strategic Planning and Innovation Program Manager. So this evening, I will be discussing our broadband efforts. As you're aware, facilitating improved broadband access for residents and businesses is a high priority project for the city. In addition, as part of the Connected Elk Grove Smart City Strategy, which was adopted in January two thousand twenty-two, a key principle is to ensure equitable access to digital technology for all. To further these objectives, in March two thousand twenty-two, the city received a Build Better Broadband Grant from Connect Humanity, a project of the TIDES Center. This Build Better Broadband Grant funded the development of a digital access report. This report provides data on digital access, equity, and affordability, resident sentiment on current services. It outlines opportunities to improve broadband and includes feasibility and market analysis. It provides a high-level view of the current state of broadband access for Elk Grove residents and businesses and outlines options for moving forward. In addition, the report identifies geographic areas of the city which are unserved or underserved by current broadband options. And as part of this grant, the city received twenty thousand dollars directly to support further work on increasing digital equity. The city has yet to, um, spend those funds. So identified in the report are equity disparities related to broadband access in Elk Grove. So while over ninety percent of households have access to the internet, over sixteen percent of households with incomes below fifty thousand dollars per year have no internet connection. And in addition to that, while Hispanic and African Americans make up approximately thirty percent of the Elk Grove population, they account for almost fifty percent of households without internet. So the report also identifies opportunities to improve equity, access, and reliability of the broadband network, and provided recommendations for next steps. These steps included making decisions related to the amount of ownership and or control the city would like, related to the digital infrastructure, determining any governance structures appropriate to advance city objectives, and determining what type of business model might work best to advance those objectives. In terms of moving forward, there are a variety of options depending on the governance and business models mentioned and the degree of influence the city would like to have on the digital infrastructure, access, equity, and affordability. Detailed here and in the staff report are four of the potential options for moving forward, with some pros and cons identified. The options provide a range of city control and influence in addition to, um, a range in the amount of expense and risk assumed by the city. So the, and options include, uh, full municipal network, which would, which has the greatest amount of city control and ownership, along with the greatest expense and the greatest level of risk. A public-private partnership between the city and a private entity is another option, and that provides the city with input over the project, eventual ownership of the network, and reduces the expense and risk to the city as it is shared with the private entity. A third option is a private open access network, similar to what is underway in other locations in the region such as Rancho Cordova and Folsom. This option provides little, if any, input from the city along with low risk and little, if any, expense for the city. And finally, there is a business-as-usual option where the city works to get in current incumbent providers to address service deficiencies without any specific or clear input or control. With options A, B, and C listed here, additional work would be needed for an alternative specific feasibility study to understand what that would look like. The city has reserved approximately one point three million in American Rescue Plan Act funding to address broadband issues in the community, and a portion of these funds could be used for such a study along with the Connect Humanity grant funding. Staff recommends the city move forward with the feasibility study of Option B, the public-private partnership network. The feasibility study would, um, involve more in-depth outreach and engagement with the community, including undertaking a representative sample survey to gather more statistically valid data on resident sentiment and potential demand for services. It would provide a greater understanding of the cost, the funding options, and the governance structure for any PPP, and it would provide more detail on the viability and risks to the city. If council were to proceed with staff recommendation, we would work to put together a detailed scope of work for that and a budget, um, for the study and would return to council for approval for that. So any specific fiscal impact to the city would depend on the direction that council decides to take. So with that, I am available for any questions.
All right, thank you for that presentation. I'll open up the public comment opportunity.
Could you just leave that?
Oh.
For option screen out.
I am happy to leave that up. And nobody has signed up to speak on item nine point one. So, I will turn to my colleagues here. I'll close the public comment opportunity first. Any questions or comments? I'll start to the left.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Carrie. Just add a couple of questions. In this model, it looks like D and C is pretty much the same thing, right? The business-as-usual, we as are operating, seems to be like a private open access network. Is that?
Um, we are not.
Oh, okay, we're not.
No, it is, uh, right now it's a private closed access network. Right, so the, um, internet providers, um, that we currently have, the incumbents, do their own network. And so it is not, right, so Comcast does cable network, and they're the ones that have the actual network and provide you the, are the ISP, the internet service provider to your house or Frontier or, you know, so it's a, it's a closed access network currently.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I mean, I'm not supportive of either one, actually, given the new direction and the work you've all done. Uh, I, I would agree with, uh, staff's recommendation about a public-private partnership. That, that seems, um, um, the most appropriate, in my opinion. And then I would just add that, I know you mentioned federal grants, so we may, we may not, qualify because of our demographics, but the opportunity to leverage federal dollars, I think, is still worthy for us to, to take a look at and seek those whenever we can. So with that, I'll defer to my other colleagues. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Spees.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I definitely support, uh, staff's recommendation. Um, I've, I've seen, um, other models work, particularly like along the Wasatch Front in, in Utah. And it's, they're getting faster, cheaper, and, and better, um, better service. And so I'm, I'm happy to at least, uh, take a look at it. And so I think, I think, uh, pursuing B is likely the best option to follow at this point in time, so thank you.
Councilmember Brewer.
I align my comments and perspectives with, um, Vice Mayor Spees and council member Soon. Uh, when you look at the public-private partnership, you definitely see the best opportunity for us to have control of our, of our broadband landscape by having the experts in the room with us to help map it out. And so it makes perfect sense, um, from that standpoint, because A, or Option A, is like, we, uh, it would be a very tough process for us to go down because we don't know what we don't know. And we definitely want to have some say in how the infrastructure is developed, and that's why C and D are just not an option. So I, I definitely agree with, with going, going about using Option B as the preferred route.
Councilmember Robles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Carrie, I have a quick question. Who would be the city partners that we'd private, who we would partner with?
So with the private, private partnership, um, we could, we've had some initial discussions with the company, but we could also go out and, you know, do an open, um, competition to see who would make sense.
Has this been done with surrounding cities around the region?
Not that I know of other jurisdictions who have done it. I know that there have been other jurisdictions in other locations, um, outside of the region.
Have they been successful?
So I would say the ones that we have talked to are sterile somewhat early in the development.
Okay, just, I'm just curious. I
Yeah.
tend to have a lot of questions usually. Okay, and then for this one, this would be something new that we as a city would be then going to, right? Pretty much managing our own network.
So the, initially, it would just be a feasibility study to look at what would it take, what would a public-private partnership look like, what would it cost, what would be the risk, how much would the city invest in that cost versus the private entities? So this is what would be the initial. So we wouldn't actually necessarily just, you know, jump down that road to say this is the direction we're going. We'd explore that more.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I agree with Councilman, Vice Mayor Spees on, um, kind of figuring out the options that we have.
All right, thank you. Great questions from colleagues. Again, this is a feasibility study, so once we get that back, we can decide how best to move forward, and that will give us sort of the, the best information to make the best decision for our community. I continue to be concerned about, um, you know, broadband access, particularly for our communities of color from an equity lens, and then further even our students and their ability to get the information they need to be successful in school. So, uh, we have a lot of responsibilities, obviously, for our community. So looking forward to hearing from this, uh, this feasibility study, and hoping to fill that gap so that we can have a hundred percent accessibility and taking care of the rest of Elk Grove. So thank you for that. I think you have consensus here for, um, moving forward with B. Thank you.
Carrie, I actually have another question. Sorry. And this is going back to the first slide that there was, um, as we move to a smart city when it comes to internet. Is that specifically, because I know Intel has done smart cities as well. Is that something that we're also like engaging different organizations as well as try to provide, access to, to broadband and, and that sort, or is it just specific, um, other entities?
So, in terms of the smart city?
Yeah.
Plan, so the smart city plan is not, it, it, the way that it was written is agnostic to, you know, any specific company or any specific technology. It is open to what makes the most sense for doing what we are, we need to do.
Cool, sorry. I just had that and I forgot to ask it, so I just wanted to. Sorry, I just had that and I forgot to ask it, so I just wanted to ask.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to our next item, 9.2.
And that's to receive an update on workforce development training programs and consider actions to execute a contract amendment with CyberProud.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Louis Sagal, Economic Development Program Manager, and I have a brief update for you today. The item is to receive information on the workforce development programs and adopt the resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with CyberProud to provide training services for Elk Grove residents in the field of information technology, and that's increasing the contract to an amount not to exceed of 1,110,508. So as a background, the, the city received the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So the council then adopted an ARPA expenditure plan, which included $2 million for workforce development programs. And as part of that, the city did a RFP, and we brought back to council two contracts, one for CyberProud to do services in information technology, and also the Charles A. Jones Career and Education Center to do manufacturing training. So first, I'll give you an update, a brief update on the Charles A. Jones Education and Training Center. The contract was for a little bit over $304,000. There's included training and courses ranging from one-day forklift operator to the long 900-hour or nine-month program of manufacturing technician. And so, so far, they've, they've done a marketing through various workforce partners and organizations. They've marketed through, to the Elk Grove Unified School District through the, through their events. They've tabled at the Never Good Market. They've done job fairs for skilled trades and also involved in the Aggie Square Community Outreach Program. So through that process, they received 91 interested residents, and, and as you'll see, they, they've come a little short on the short, on the short-term programs, but for the nine-month program, they've filled five of the available 10 slots, and this is really the manufacturing technician program certification is to get you into entry-level manufacturing job. And so in the future, marketing efforts will be enhanced and focused on the shorter-term programs to try to fill those slots, and this is what the market's saying right now in terms of demand. For the CyberProud, this has been high demand. The program, the, the contract was for a little bit over 353,000 to train 40 Elk Grove residents in the field of IT, and that specifically in cybersecurity and IT infrastructure tracks. And so, so far, they've been able to fill the 37 slots. They've taken the training, so we'll see, we see a perfect score for the cybersecurity training and 91% completion for the IT support. And the remaining three are actually already enrolled into the next cohort. So these trainings that have, these individuals that received the training have already been enrolled in the exam prep and will be, you know, taking those exams in the near future. So here's information on, on what, some demographic information. So there's 86% minority representation in individuals that have been identified through this program. You'll see that 25% are Black or African-American, 19% two or more races, and 29% Asian, as well as, you know, 14% white and 9% Latino, and Hawaiian Pacifico, under 5%. In terms of gender, it's kind of in line with the national average of 27% female, which is, you know, something that, you know, that's seen across the tech world. The average age is 31, so you see that almost 60% are between the ages of 18 and 30. And you'd also see a slight increase when you get to 41-plus. In terms of satisfaction from the students, this is self-reported from them as they completed the training. We see that they're generally very satisfied with this program. So as far as what's been happening, CyberProud, as of 6/30 of this year, they received a little bit over 200 applications. 92 were, meet the requirement. The 37, as mentioned, were accepted into the programs, with the remaining three going into the future cohort. And so that, that left a waitlist of 67 eligible applicants. And so as we see the demand continues to grow, there's also been interest in software development as another track, so that's part of the recommendation. So the contract amendment is to increase the training capacity from 40 to 120, so adding another 80 residents that could go through this training at the software development track. And to do this work, we would recommend to, to expand the timeframe to do this work till December 34th of 2025. And that results in an increase of 757,350. So in summary, the recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with CyberProud for the amount of 1.1 million dollars. And in terms of fiscal impact, there's sufficient ARPA funds allocated to cover this increase. I'm available for questions. I do also want to acknowledge Colleen here with CyberProud. She's also available to answer any questions.
We do have a number of speakers signed up for this item. I will go ahead now and open up the public comment opportunity, and first up is Shannon Perkins, then Caleb Vosser.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I'm here in support of y'all to pass this amendment, and I do volunteer work for CyberProud. Right now, I project manage all the recruiting, so I recruited all of those Elk Grove residents. And I could tell you that they're stellar, all of them. And all of them show potential. All of them have wide range from right out of high school to college graduate, looking to re-skill, to re-career. And right now, as you saw, I had 67 people waiting right now for a phone call from me to, to do some interviews with them. So I'm hopeful that you all will pass this today so that we can get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Caleb Vosser, followed by Adnan Beg. Hope I said it right.
Hello and good evening. I was one of the students who actually did pass from the other 66, so let me just tell you my story of how I got into the program. Might be helpful to educate how the program works and why it's important. So I actually was introduced with cybersecurity and actually in Elk Grove High School, so even earlier, I had two kind of years of experience, particularly in instant response with vulnerabilities. So I kind of had that education from high school, and I transferred that very easily to CyberProud. CyberProud even knows my instructor from Elk Grove High School, so very easy track to get in. So there's a lot of opportunity. From my own experience, I know that from high school into CyberProud, it's a very easy transition, so I would have, hopefully, you can pass whatever you need to do to give them more support, so if you have any questions, yeah.
Thank you. Adnan Beg, and followed by Gina Chun, or Chun.
Hi, my name is Adnan Beg. I'm 21 years old. I go to Sac State. I study bachelor's in science and computer science, with emphasis in cybersecurity, software engineering. I also own and operate a media company. I'm also a resident of Elk Grove. This is my first council meeting, so bear with me.
Good job.
Thanks. I'm also here just to talk about CyberProud and my profound appreciation for this organization. I was part of their apprenticeship program this summer, and it was an initiative that not only changed how I looked at cybersecurity, but it also has the potential to transform our community and beyond. In an era where technology is at the forefront of progress and innovation, programs like CyberProud play a pivotal role in shaping the future. And so this apprenticeship really provided me a lot of valuable knowledge, skills, and experience in the field of cybersecurity, enabling me to contribute meaningfully to my future employer's digital resilience and security in their infrastructure. One of the remarkable aspects of CyberProud is its commitment to inclusivity and diversity. And so it was a very diverse group of individuals that came into the program. It opens doors for individuals from all walks of life, regardless of their background, and helps them embark on a journey into the dynamic world of cybersecurity. Furthermore, cybersecurity doesn't just teach technical skills, it also instills that deep sense of responsibility and ethics in their apprentice. We do live in a world where cyber threats do have far-reaching consequences, and so this emphasis on ethical cybersecurity skills and practices is essential to safeguard not only our city, but also our global interconnectedness. And so the partnerships formed through the program with like local businesses and organizations, I think that would be really significant. And so in conclusion, I just want to say I support and commend CyberProud for their work that they gave and helping students understand what cybersecurity is and also exposing them to it. And yeah, I, I wanted just so much support in them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Nice, nicely done. Next up is Gina Chun.
It's probably too high. First time here, too. Came here, parked here, and like, where are we at when I got here?
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. I, I grew up in Elk Grove, went to school in Stockton for high school, just to finish my last year there, then came back to Elk Grove again. So I'm very happy that I joined the apprentice program, because I'm a stay-home mom for 10, 12 years, and I'm in IT, but then because the kids are more important, so I put them, I put my career to the side, and then I was so happy that they called me up, and I didn't know I would get in because, you know, I'm kind of older and, and I have my, I have a lot of background in IT already, but then even with that background, I still learned so much in cybersecurity, because that's one part that I didn't learn in school. And I love the program because they kind of ground me to understand, to be, be able to understand who's out there and what's out there and what we need to worry about, especially with kids and electronics. And then I'm here just to support them and to make sure that we, we all are aware of what's out there and that even like being a stay-home mom, we can still make a time to learn and to improve our skills, our background, and learn more about what's out there. And now we're in the training program to get the certificate, and basically we have the manager time, which I, I love it, because we, we have the multitask and everything, especially with two boys in sixth and seventh grade, so I have to be running around and learning and getting everything together. And basically, it's teaching time management. The program is just very helpful for me as a single mom and also working part-time as well. So I hope you guys pass the program, and we can see more people like me in the field, and we can go back, you know, it's never too late. We can always go back and learn some more new things out there. That's all. Thank you.
You're quite remarkable. That's really impressive. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me here.
Thank you. You're always welcome here. Great, great testimonial. Ms. Chun was the last speaker, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and open it up for council comments. I'm gonna actually, Vice Mayor, since this is your, this is your baby.
So I won't, I'll try to keep it short, but this is one that I could get excited about and talk about all night. But first, I mean, most important, you know, when our residents prosper, our city prospers, right? When we have residents who are being successful, then that means that our city becomes successful, and if the city can in any way facilitate that and, and make that happen, I think, I think that's exactly what we need to be doing. So I'm having a hard time sitting still in the chair. I really am, trust me. So the, the, as a practitioner of cybersecurity since 2000, no, a long time ago. Anyway, it's, the Security Plus, the A+ and the Network Plus, those are things that is being specifically asked for every single day. This isn't that you're training somebody for something that doesn't exist. This is what is in demand today. I'm absolutely thrilled to see almost perfect completion in the whole track, right? That's, that's fantastic. I'm really thrilled with the representation of, you know, the 86%. That is, is just absolutely fantastic. I do have a question about placement, so if, I think it's probably best if you come up. I just got some quick questions, and I'm sorry, and please let us know your name one more time. I just can't remember. I just, I gotta tell you, I'm, I'm excited about this.
So am I. Oh, hello. I'm Colleen Morehead. I'm founder, CEO, CyberProud.
Awesome.
Thanks for having us.
Awesome. So the, the sign-up rate, fantastic. The completion rate, fantastic. Representation, awesome. The, the big cherry on the cake that I'm really looking for is, is the placement. What is the plan for placement? What do you believe that they'll be able, what, what's reasonable to expect in the marketplace in terms of salaries? And what do you think, do you have any sort of numbers on where you would expect the placement ratio to be?
That's good, very good question. So we work with an array of different employers. So what we're seeing is in technology, we can, you know, we connect with your larger employers, so just kind of use a couple of examples. So state of California, we actually have a workshop scheduled for Friday. We, we get a lot of interest in the state of California in particular. We see higher demands in like the EDD or DMV. Those are two that have kind of popped up just the past couple of weeks. We also, one of our contacts with the state is CPSHR, which is a recruitment arm for the state of California. They do a lot of contract work. So that's sort of, I'm sorry, I'm going to talk with my hands, on the larger scope of things, Orascenture is one of our other partners where we refer candidates to them. The other thing is, and you probably know this, is that IT's kind of transitioned to more of a, what I refer to as MSP or a service provider sort of model. And so we're, we're actually in communication with multiple different recruiters that have a need for, and it's a really great entry point for individuals. So, you know, we did have the majority of our, our trainees, 32 of them, took this, the cybersecurity track, but we also have entry level, which is the computer infrastructure support. So those are the ones that are getting that, that A+ certification, and there's just a lot of really good opportunity for someone to come in, and they're making a salary of about an entry-level salary, is putting them in around 40,000 a year, sort of a base level, and then as high as, you know, we see, you know, getting into a six-figure salary, again, depending on which employer they're with and what role they're in. But we did, you know, we do have candidates that came into the program that had, you know, 10, 15 years of experience, and some of them can do like project management. So, so we can help consult them where they're taking their new IT skills and are going to move into a role where they, they might be at sort of a mid-level, and obviously the salaries are better at that level. I'm thinking you had another question, though. I'm sorry, talk really fast.
No, no, no. There is another question, but I think that's important to note, is that in some instances, they're, they're brand-new to the workforce overall. In other instances, they're coming in with, say, a project management experience or some sort of experience, and this sort of rounds out a different side for them, and so they may not necessarily be at a 40,000. They could be closer or over, over a six-figure. So it's, it's kind of unfair to ask what is a salary expectation, right? So, and so I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I actually, I meet with every one of them.
Right.
Every week, and so we, we do a lot of resume review. The other thing that's sort of tricky, I'm going to say, is that not all of them recognize their value, so they're thinking it's, it's an either-or, and so they're like, you know, we have individuals who kind of go, well, should I just take that off my resume? And I'm thinking all of your work experience has value. And I'm thinking, all of your work experience has value. And so we really try to create the full picture for them. The other thing is, and to your point, is tech, the, there are multiple different avenues in technology and cybersecurity in particular. So it isn't just that they're gonna be sitting in a cubicle doing, you know, reading code all day, right? So there's, there's multiple different ways. If they've got experience in business development, for instance, they might be, we, we help them sort of explore sales in that, that realm, if they've got that experience. Where we've got other individuals on the technical side, so they might be actually doing, working out on a site and doing more of the installation, maintenance and that sort of thing. So each one of them, you know, again, we're trying to give them a more well-rounded perception of themselves and their abilities.
Awesome.
Yep.
Well, I'll, I'll leave some time for, for my peers, but I, I'm very excited. I appreciate it. I'm looking forward to seeing, hopefully, what the, what the placement ratios or statistics are later on. But I'm, I'm thrilled, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles.
I'm excited, just as Vice Mayor Spies was saying. It's awesome to see the diversity and it's awesome to see the percentage of how many folks are from minority backgrounds. Question to like the under-valley, because that's, you brought something up that's probably in that specific field that folks don't have other people who look like them, who can speak to that. Is there, does the program like kind of touch on that, whether it's a little bit, half like, or is that just ment, through mentorship and then bringing or try to bring other folks who are in that space that is represented?
No, that, that, well, that, that's a great question.
I know it's a loaded question too.
No, no, it, it's really interesting. So when, when I think about why, why I even ventured into this about Cyber Proud, and it was sort of to change the minds about people, about that tech should be for everybody, right? We started in the middle of COVID. We saw a lot of people who were working in hospitality and retail that were pushed out of the workforce. And we also saw this change in the workforce, right? All of a sudden, everything was connected to our, our phone. Cybersecurity became even, you know, more paramount to every scope of business, every sector. So being the parent of two college-aged kids at that time, seeing the struggles that they had and that I wanted to serve people who didn't see themselves working in technology, right? So trying to change that mindset that it's for everybody. And so having individuals come to us who weren't on, I guess, that track, right? To say, well, they're gonna be a computer science engineer. Well, the industry doesn't need more engineers. What they need are people who understand technology, who can, you know, work at an entry level, right? And build that talent. So to your point, it's that we, we don't intentionally create that diversity. It just happens naturally. That diversity is representative of our communities. It's representative of this region. And so we're, we're super pleased to see those numbers, but it just, it just happens naturally, so.
Thank you for that. And we, obviously, we see it in the people who are coming and support. And that's awesome. And thank you for spending your evening with us and supporting this. So I will, you know, end it there, but thank you so much.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. Councilmember Brewer?
I think one of the things that we've seen from Cyber Proud through this program is that there is a demand and that there are people who are ready and willing to go into the IT profession. And I think that's, that's a big compliment to the work that you're doing at Cyber, at Cyber Proud. And I noticed that there was, that there was a number, there was a graphic that showed a lot of nines. But I was wondering if that was from a scale of one to ten of the mean scores of the performance? Because that's, that shows you that we definitely have talented individuals who are going to, going through the program and making their sales job-ready. And that's, that's another big compliment. I think, and the thing that impresses me the most is that, that there's such a demand in reaching out to new people and that you have people wanting to get into the program, but we're, we have this cap at forty. I think it bears weight for us to expand that, to expand that, that field. Because as we're starting to see people make a career transition and as we're starting to see young people make the, make, make that step into, into this profession, it shows that, that there is a want and there's a desire for people who are, who are ready and hungry to improve themselves to go into this field. So I'm very, I'm very pleased because I know when we had the conversation earlier this year, we were, we were talking, we were finalizing the, the pilot program. And to see that the pilot program, we're not even at the one-year mark and we're prepared to make an amendment to increase the numbers because the demand is there, the ARPA funding is there, and it's creating positive impact to everyone who's seeking it and everyone who's going into it. So I want to thank you, Colleen. This is amazing work and, and I'm more than happy to support this program.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Suwen?
Thank you, Mayor. Building off of Councilman Brewer's comments, I want to thank Shannon because I think a lot of that demand is her recruiting our Elk Grove students. So please keep that up. I, I am in agreement with my colleagues here. This is a great program. It's a growing industry, as everybody knows. And so that's exciting, as our Vice Mayor highlighted. But also the retraining, I think, is fantastic. You know, we, I think, you know, especially when, when COVID was, was hit, I, I think there was a lot of talk about how, you know, how do we retrain people, people to put them in, in new work? We know as technology goes, our skills from, from employees need to keep up with, with technology. And so this is, I think, an example of that. So I'm excited about that. But also employer recruitment. You know, I believe when you look at the Silicon Valley, you know, a lot of companies stay there because there is a robust workforce that's trained in, in information technology and computer science and those things. And so here we are, creating and building upon a workforce in this space that, you know, could result in, in companies locating here. Maybe our Vice Mayor would like to open a satellite office or expand. But anyway, I'll leave that for another conversation. So all that's to say, I, I am also supportive. I'm gonna hand it back over to the mayor, actually.
Thank you. Yes, please, go ahead.
Something I'm remiss in doing. I've had the opportunity to talk with Mr. Aguirre several times over the last few months about this project and, and about this program. And he's always got good updates for me and he's always doing his best to keep me, keep me informed. And he's done a fantastic job getting all of this presentation together and getting folks here. And so I know, I know you're not the only one, but I know that you are the one who has been ram-rodding this, Mr. Aguirre. And so I want to thank you very, very much for this. I think it's definitely something that the city should be very, very proud of. And I, I, there's no way, more way for me to say something, I find it extremely exemplary. So thank you for all of your effort. Thank you for this presentation. This is, again, I'm having a hard time staying seated and I'm not lying about that.
No, I can vouch for that. I sit next to him.
So thank you, Mr. Aguirre. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you, Vice Mayor, for those great words, recognizing our amazing staff and all of you for coming here this evening in support of this wonderful program. This is a great use of our ARPA funds. This is what we should be doing with this. And so I'm definitely in support. And I don't really want to repeat what everyone else has said. So just thank you for the presentation and thank you all to the testimonials. Very, very important. You, you know, weathered the entire city council meeting so you could share your experiences in the bookends of someone coming out right out of high school and then on the other, on the tail end, sort of a, a new career and coming back to something that really shows the power of this program and, and all of its potential. So thank you for that and thank you all as well. So with that, I will look for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion, please. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is council comments, reports, future agenda items. I'll start to the right. Councilmember Robles.
I attended Regional Sand today with Councilman Suwen. Nothing to report. I do want to say that Elk Grove PD put out a video honoring our women officers and it was awesome. It was a really cool video. I shared it on social media and I got several replies that, they're like, can we, can Elk Grove PD do more cool videos? So thank you, please.
More cool videos. Councilmember Brewer?
I have no items to report other than I believe Sacramento Public Library Joint Powers Authority is meeting Thursday or is it next, next Thursday?
Next Thursday.
All right. So you can give us a report on the twenty-seventh. Councilmember Suwen?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a Segal Transportation Committee meeting last week. As Councilmember Robles mentioned, we had a Regional Sand today. And then next week, we have Sacramento Area Council of Governments Board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing other than you and I have SDA tomorrow afternoon.
Yes, good times. Thank you. I'll waive my report. And I do want to adjourn in the memory of a Sacramento area giant in the arts community. He was a tremendous activist, Juanishi Orozco. I had the privilege of knowing him. Some of you may have also known him. I think, Mr. Brewer, you knew him. An artist, an advocate, the founding member of the Royal Chicano Air Force. And just extending condolences to the family. And may his memory be a blessing to all that knew him and his tremendous impact, particularly in the Latino arts community. So thank you, everyone. Good night. We are adjourned.